Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you very much for being here in this special meeting that we're sharing knowledge and receive public comment. We are called to order and Mr. Town Manager, I guess we're ready for the public comments. Madam Clerk, everything ready?
Yes.
Is there anyone that would like to speak to the group in our public comments? Period. If so... If so, raise your hand and be recognized. Hearing and seeing no one. Mr. Goodrich, is this you?
This is strictly...
Mr. Evans?
The boards called the meeting to discuss it. And I think this was more particularly Mr. Sullivan initiated it. But this is... Mr. Evans is probably the down the mound for leadoff thing.
Mr. Sullivan, if you called the meeting, then what's your pleasure? What's your pleasure?
Well, I'll see what I can do. Called the meeting because this is, as I said in the note I sent out, as I said at the Board of Commissioners meeting, appreciate everything and all the hard work that the members of the committee put into this. But at the end of the day, the people who are responsible for accepting this, sending it forward, and then going into the future to make plans for the town is the board. And so, I'm sure that there are going to be some suggestions for changes. And that I thought it would be beneficial if the people who had put in the time and the effort were here to give us the benefit of the rationale, the reason, the discussion that they had. And then, at the end of the day, we'll still decide, the board will still decide whether to accept the plan as submitted or to make some revisions or to go forward in that manner. So, that's the plan I have here for today. I don't know if anybody other than myself has any suggested revisions or wants to discuss some of the issues that are contained within the current, the draft copy of the report. But that's where we stand on this. And I appreciate the fact that six people who are on the committee are in attendance today.
Mr. Evans, do you want to add anything before we...
Yeah, I think what I would like to add in this particular conversation at this point is that the land use plan committee, they did work very hard. And there was a lot of input, there was a lot of dialogue, there was a lot of data taken, and there was a lot of information that was gathered. The committee worked very hard. And they pretty much followed the guidelines that were set forth in the 7B requirements. Now, I think because we had a committee, the committee was formed, and I think because the committee that was formed and the planning board that was sitting, that initially and maybe even into it further, there was some confusion about how the plan would go forward and how it would be treated once it went forward, once the committee approved it. And they had no doubt that it was going to the planning board. And then, the planning board had no doubt, or I always thought it was clear, that the planning board understood that once they approved it, that there would be a copy that would go to DCM for review and approval. And then, once that was approved there, it would come back to y'all for your approval. And I don't think that there was ever a misconception that the Board of Commissioners had the last say-so in this document. And never should have been because that was always made clear, that the Board of Commissioners would have the last and final say-so on the document. Now, it was also clear that the document could be amended at any time, at any time, even after DCM approves. What may be lost in all of this is that while you can amend it, you have to be very careful not to change any of those required 7B requirements under the statute that mandates that we make this and what should be included. So, you know, I can do my very best to try to help in those situations. But I will tell you this, that the fact that it's at DCM does not stop y'all from making pre-changes and having the final approval now and then because the board always had the final approval. There should never have been any doubt about that. What we did do was, in lieu of that, was that we made sure that this document was well, was in the sunshine the whole time. We made sure that the public knew about it. We constantly let the public know, all the meetings were open, we monitored everything, we sent out some documents two to three times. And we went far beyond the land use plan. We went far beyond what the original hazard mitigation plan did for public notification and for gathering data. So, that, I guess that's my thing. But my real thing is, is that I don't, I don't ever want anyone to believe there was ever a misconception. And if there was, and it was the wrongest perception, that the Board of Commissioners did not have last say-so in this plan.
I appreciate that, Tim. I don't think that that ever was a consideration for us. We knew that we did. But we felt that it was wiser to actually work through questions and potential changes while it was still fresh in everybody's mind, rather than waiting months and months for it to come back from DCM and then perhaps struggle a bit with why was this said, why wasn't this said? Plus, it just sometimes makes sense to do the talking and tweaking before you send something off. But I, as a Board of Commissioner member, have never considered that we did not have the final say. We did know that. We just thought it would be better to work on it ahead of time rather than after the fact. And I still think it's unfortunate we couldn't have done that last fall when it was even fresher in everybody's mind.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Chairman of the Planning Board, you want to say anything before we proceed? Would you like to say anything before we proceed? All right.
Excuse me, I have a process question. So, normally, like, the audience isn't allowed to speak, but because this is supposed to be a workshop, I assume that when you guys say something, we're allowed to speak and counter to it or verify?
We're getting ready to address that right now. Since it's his request, he's going to now tell us how he wants to proceed.
Yeah, I would suggest that we just have a conversation amongst everybody present, the board members as well as the members of the committee. I mean, that's the purpose of having them come.
Yes, the formality will be kind of laid aside at this point. There is no one that doesn't understand the way things work. Everybody in the room does. He's still on the floor.
Okay. Well, what I, what I, what I have here are a couple of items that I would like to discuss because despite the fact that I've been asked not to wordsmith, my profession, wordsmithing is part of it, and words are very important. And if we're going to have to live by these words, then I think they should be a little bit more precise. Or I would have discussed them differently if I had been a member of the committee rather than only being able to speak after the process has been done. So, let me just look and see what I have here. If you would look at in 32A...
You're talking about policy?
Three, yes, three...
Policy 32A.
32A.
Policy 32A?
Yeah. Page 318.
There's a section here, if you look at it, the development in hazardous areas. And it says, "The town shall use a variety of methods, including camera setbacks," and goes on and on and on. "This policy shall have deference for the rights of private property owners." To me, that means that the property owner's rights are going to be considered above those rights and above the considerations of the town and the rest of the people. Deference to me, in an illegal context, you give, it has more weight than anybody else's. And although I'm a strong believer in property rights, I think the better word would be to consider, that we will consider the property rights of the individual and take it in context with all of the other rights, rather than giving the property owner more weight and deference.
I think it says the policy has deference, so that has more weight than the property owner.
The policy shall have deference for the rights of the private property owners. And I think the policy should consider the rights of the private property owners.
And may I make a statement? If everybody's sort of through thinking that, the same policy, and after yesterday's discussion, maybe people will kind of say, "Yeah, I see where you're going." Talk about development in hazardous areas, and you talk about discouraging the development of property that can be reasonably foreseen as potentially hazardous. I come from hazard and risk industry, and you talk about potentially high risk, not... I mean, hazard is just a state. Generally, you're trying to avoid the high-risk areas, not a hazard area. I think yesterday, after all the talking we went through, it's like this should be the point is, we're looking for avoiding high risk. We can't avoid hazard. We live on a barrier island. Hazard is a, hazard is the thing we live with.
The other, and I guess the overarching concept of this plan, and I heard the discussions as the, as the plan was being developed, was to try to not be too specific and to be more general in scope, so that you won't be boxing yourself into a particular point of view or a goal or an aspiration. And throughout the document, there were many, many instances where the more general language is used, but there are some instances where specific language is used. And in some of those instances, I would suggest that we take a change. For instance, if you go to the next page, if you look at 32H, land acquisition. "The town supports the acquisition of property that is unsuitable for development due to coastal hazards, acquisition appropriate properties." And I think that, or I would suggest that we insert, "The town supports the acquisition where practicable of property that is suitable for the development." And you have that language throughout this document in many other areas. So, it's, it's not different. But to me, that goes along with the general and the less specific request and aspirations. So, I have a couple of, of those suggested changes sprinkled throughout the document. But I think the biggest area where I would have changes, and again, there is just a changing of wording, and it's a changing of wording when you look at the definitions that were supplied as an appendice, appendancy to the land use plan. If you go to Section 4, both the goal, the objective, and within a couple of the areas listed in Number 4, we use maximize. We're going to maximize the access to the beach. We're going to maximize people's ability to get to the beach. As some of the folks on the land use plan were also participants in the parking survey study and suggestions. And my understanding, and tell me if anything's changed, but at the time that the parking was done, it was determined that we provided adequate parking. And not only do we provide adequate parking, but we were more liberal and more accepting than any of the other islands and towns and beach communities. And we'll welcome the people to the island. But there comes a point when you can only accept so many people. We're going to have a new RV park built about two miles from here that rumor has it, 1,400 spaces? No, that's not right. How many spaces?
I have a question to you. My last number was 192.
192?
Yeah.
Okay. Much more manageable.
That might have been the key, or maybe somebody gave us a system call that are within the proximity.
However, 192. Those people are going to want to come to the beach. They're welcome to the beach, but I think it should be like any other location. And I think that the goal we have as a town is to be open and accepting. But I don't believe, I want to say I want to maximize it. I want to maintain it. I want, I want to do something where they're welcome to be here, but somebody down the line can't say, "Hey, buddy, you promised to be able to give us more, more space, more room, more places to park." I don't think that's the intent. I don't think the people on the committee intended that. And so, for those where we had the maximum, maximize, I would suggest we change it to maintain or something of the equivalent. And that's more or less my two cents on this.
Forward.
Page, where do you want that?
I think it's coming generic.
If you look on 415, Goal 4.2, for example.
Yeah, goal and object, 4.2. And then, 4.2A1 and 4.2A, A1 and 2B, 4.2B. I have maintaining rather than expanding in 42B. And in 42A, I had a where practicable, as I discussed earlier, rather than, you know, almost mandating that we do something.
I mean, my understanding of the whole land use plan thing is, you know, it's not a, it's not a binding document. It's a suggestion. And so, I was talking with a big last night about the, if you put something in there in the land use plan that says, "We don't want to have the exercise trail." And then, a grant comes up for an exercise trail, and we apply for it, and then seeing the land use plan, we don't want that, we probably wouldn't get the grant. So, the same thing with the parking here. If you say, "We want to maintain the parking," and something comes up, and they're saying, "Okay, we want to, we want to give you guys a bunch of money to expand the parking," and in our document, we say, "Well, we just want to maintain what we have." Would that be a, you know, would that, are we not looking into the future here?
No. I mean, if you look at the appendix that has the definitions, maintain means keeping condition the desired state of affairs through the use of town regulations and practices by staff. Financial support by the town should be provided if needed. So, it in no way, shape, or form says we're going to limit anything. It's, we're going to do the best we can under the circumstances and go from there. And I think that's just better than saying you're going to maximize it. Because to me, maximize is an aspiration that we are, we want to increase the parking, the access. And my understanding from the committee is, we don't want to spend more money for that. We've provided adequate parking. We've been open to people from all around. And the other, the other beach towns are not doing it, so we become the beach town of last resort. The more accepting we are, the more people are going to come. And it's just like a cycle. If we make more space, you know, it's like build it and they will come. More people are going to come. And it's not going to, it's not going to help the condition because if we make 10 more parking spaces, but 20 more people show up, what have we accomplished? So, that's, that's my, you know, that's the way I'm looking at it.
Any other commissioner want to speak?
Yeah. And again, a lot of the things that I have, as Mike says, words are very important and clarity of them. But before we get into what people may think is wordsmithing, I would like to address what I think is the biggest need. And that is in Chapter 4, Analysis of Community Facilities, water.
Can you say it again, remember?
4-1, 4-1 and 4-2. Whether people believe we need another water tower or not is not the point of this. I think that there needs to be more discussion around the need of delivering adequate water at times of maximum demand, and that demand also would include a fire on top of peak At the bottom of page 4-2, currently, there are no major plans for upgrades or capital improvements related to the water system. Actually, in the capital improvement plan last year, there was a water tower in that plan. So, that statement right there is wrong. I think there needs to be more in here about the need to make sure that we do have adequate water during peak use and on top of that, if there is a fire, so that it is in there, that it has been considered and addressed. It is not a decision, do we or do we not need a water tower? But it needs to be something that is discussed. And when you go to the county documents about their obligation to deliver water to towns like Hole and Beach, it does say that they have to provide that average amount of water, but it is an individual municipality's responsibility to make sure that they can handle peak use. And so, I think that this, this section does need to reflect some of that. And then, when you get in there to the operation of water facilities, Objective 4-1 on 413, "Operation of water facilities. The town shall ensure efficient, unerupted water, operation of water facilities for town residents," period. I think it needs to be, "The town shall ensure efficient, unerupted operation of water facilities for town residents and visitors for both normal and peak demands." I mean, again, this is what needs to actually happen. So, that didn't, that didn't come through here. Continuing to... 413, on Policy 41B, "Operation of water facilities."
Thanks.
And I will be, I mean, I'm more than happy to write all this up, you know, actually type it all up, all the things that I have notes on. But this one, to me, this section and this policy need to be made clear that we are talking about everybody during normal and peak demands. And we do need to address the issue of fire.
So, I think that the peak, it's all in, on 4-2, it talks about all that. I mean, they can see the water consumption graph, and it talks about peak and according to the water supply plan, it says that we don't need another water, we don't have any issues until 2050. So, and if you went and looked at the water plan that the town created, so, and we do talk about peak, and we talk about the visitors, and we talk about how many are going to come. And I understand that there was a water tower in the capital plan, but there was no data. I know you pride yourself on looking at the data before making decisions, and there's no data that shows that we need another water tower at this point. Just because there was an error in the financial plan doesn't mean we should perpetuate it into the land use plan. But that's how we came to the conclusion, based on all the data that was given to us about the water consumption, including the peak.
I have a question. The, on page 4-1, where we talk about the water supply system, did the statement that speaks to the source of the town's water coming from the Northwest Treatment Plant, did that come from that water supply plan? Anybody know?
I, we, it might have been such as...
I'm assuming that Wes got that information.
Yeah, Wes got it.
Yeah, probably from, that's, that information came from Wes.
Okay, we, the town's water supply comes from Supply and the Northwest Plant. It's not just limited to the Northwest Water Plant. It's a, it's a double, it's an interconnected system. That's a, that's a system of wells up in Supply where the, where they use groundwater. So, I don't know how to go about amending that, but it's, it's an important point.
Are you talking about the second paragraph where it says where the primary water source is, the Cape Fear River, that?
Yes.
Maybe he's just talking, maybe the word primary is the key there. But again, that came from Wes, from his research.
Yeah.
Okay.
I thought you got it from somewhere in the county that it was corresponding.
Yeah.
Well, David, I would say though that, you know, we did this back in...
Right. Maybe it's a difference, that make a difference, but...
It could be, but I know I have seen the map of where our water comes from, and we didn't get the 211 stuff. They're interconnected, but our water was coming from the Northwest Treatment Plant, and Oak Island was getting the 211 water. It came up with the discussion about the PFS. You want to...
Jenna.
Jenna, thank you, Jenna. And their map showed our water came from Northwest Treatment Plant, for what it's worth. But it, it could change that any day, right? I don't know. But when...
It's a, it's a switch. It's a, it's a dial that they mix it.
I'm just saying, wherever he got that information, if he looked at that map, he would have gotten the Northwest Treatment Plant.
Well, the new reverse osmosis plant, will that still be the Northwest, is that what the new reverse osmosis is? Does that, that information came from Wes?
Yep.
And he gathered that information from the county, too.
That reverse osmosis is to remove the PFAS, which is in the Cape Fear River, not the supply groundwater that we know of yet.
Right, so what I'm saying, so the water will be coming from that new plant in 2022 or whatever it comes along with.
Right. Anyway, just a question.
I don't think any of us would object to any correction of factual information that's in here. So, that kind of stuff would be routine without...
Okay.
Because otherwise, any of us would even discuss it with the county as it is presented, so...
Okay. I guess I'll just go back to where I start having questions.
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
I think that my point was that if that statement came from our water supply plan, and I know that we developed the water supply plan, the statement was that if there's an error in the financial plan, if we've made an error as something as simple and basic as where we get our water from, how accurate is the other data? That was, that was my premise on, that I asked, that's the reason why I asked that question.
So, it doesn't say it came from the water plan, right? Whereas over here, it says, "According to the water plan, we have capacity till 2050." So, that, I think, came from the water plan. But this came from Wes somehow getting it from the county, because he doesn't directly say that it came from the water plan.
Frankly, I think there were some that, on the committee, that didn't want inclusion of this, you know, as a potential... You know, as a potential down the road, it would help suffice if the grant money were to become available. But I think the issue surrounded whether we were talking capacity or the strength of that capacity. I mean, water towers are more than just a storage facility. They, they allow pressure to build and, and I think the concern was, and, and the Fire Marshal did appear before planning and zoning, I don't know whether, it's probably been some time now, but he did indicate that there were certain households on the extreme end of the island that would be some, that he felt that the water pressure was insufficient in those homes. And that was part of the rationale for the water tower. It wasn't necessarily a volume issue, it was a pressure issue and.
But that's the report that we pretty much said we didn't acknowledge because it was based on bad data, commercial versus residential. And it was really just the Fire Marshal's opinion, which was why we rejected that report and went, sent it back to the board and said, you know, if you really want to consider a new water tower, you need to have a, a company that specializes in this go and do a report. So that was the last that we sent back to the board on the water tower issue. Needed to get a real study because that data was flawed, flawed.
Part of the fall was that the Fire Marshal was saying twenty-five hundred gallons per minute. And the state's saying the minimum is five hundred gallons. So how they got five times the amount and that we were at like a thousand or fifteen hundred with what we have now. And so that's why I thought that it was kind of a, like Tracy said, we, there's some bad data here somewhere. If the Fire Marshal's saying twenty-five hundred and the state's saying the minimum is five hundred and we have fifteen hundred, do we really need a tower? Spend all that money for something that's, that's a fall.
And that's the difference between delivering drinking water and having pressure for fire, which there's a lot of data and explanations in some specific FEMA documents that are about fire flow, et cetera, et cetera, and a couple others that are available. And some of it, it, it's extremely difficult to pin it all together, particularly since recommendations are usually made for a two-story house, so many feet apart. We don't have two-story houses. We're actually, you know, it's like, when they're talking about how high they're, it's basically how, the assumption of how high you have to fire that water, a two-story house is what they figure. By my way of thinking, we have three-story houses. And we have a lot of houses that are the worst case ten feet apart. This is what I mean about, the whole thing is extremely difficult to figure out just where we are. I think it is significant that the Fire Marshal comes and has a number. And I've heard these numbers before from, at other meetings that have nothing to do with Holden Beach about what you're trying to get for fire flow. And in addition, we did have that letter sent from Tri, Tri Beach as well, um, from the Tri Beach Chief or Assistant Chief or whatever, that was actually.
That's who came.
Yeah. You know, the Board of Commissioners got a, a letter from someone else later in the year that was actually recommending that we consider or that we get a second water tower for fire safety's sake. So I'm simply saying, there's still a lot out there that I don't think has been covered or digested. And it's something that I think we need to clearly address, that we are considering fire flow in water, how, just, and that it will routinely, it will periodically or continually or however we want to say it, be watched. But I don't think any of us want a surf city that like happened at Surf City this past September, October, whatever, in the fall. And because I am down at West End, I can tell you water pressure during the summer is markedly less without fires. And I mean, you can see it, you can feel it, that the water pressure is low during peak times. So that's what we're, that's what we're dealing with, is that couple months of a year, if this really goes the wrong way. And it's not just the far West End, because we have a benefit there that our houses are further apart. All you need to do is get down into the eleven hundred, eleven fifty, where the houses are ten feet apart. That's where it's actually, to me, an even higher risk than going further west, where we're twenty-some feet apart, and it helps.
Um, Pat, I think what Tracy was, was trying to say was that when that issue came to planning and zoning, we didn't feel comfortable that we had the expertise to say, build a water tower. What we said was, we recommend that if you wanted to move forward, that you get a, a study done from a professional engineer that has experience with that. Because ATM said, we've never done this, this is not what we do.
I, I understand that, and that's not actually my concern with this report. And remember, the board did take that recommendation on, and it is in the budget for us to do that. My concern is that there really isn't any, anything in here that raises the point of, and maximum peak could be a fire on top of, and that we will, we will be watching this, that we will be doing what is necessary if we discover that we do have a problem. Because it is documented that there is a problem at West End having lower pressure than the Fire Marshal would recommend. And numbers I have seen in different FEMA documents are around that number he threw around. But five hundred is the, is what you must by law deliver for drinking water. It doesn't cover the other points. So, and that, and that was stated several times by various people who have spoken to us, that the five hundred, that's, that's what you have to have by law. That doesn't mean that that's adequate. There's a difference between, we all know, between you meet the law, but is it adequate?
So when the Fire Marshal came and spoke to us, he said it was his opinion. And we didn't feel that we could spend two million dollars on one person's opinion when he had no data to back it up. That's all we're saying.
I, I, I. I agree with what you're saying, but I, I think that this is two different discussions. No, nobody here is discussing whether or not we should put a water tower up. I think the discussion, so I, I would just suggest that if you, Pat, if you have some language that you think should be inserted into one of these recommendations, then we'll look at it. It's not a question about whether we're going to authorize a, a new tower.
It's the last line on four two that she, that we're dispensing, that she.
No, I said, on top of not having the discussion, there was also the error by stating that. Because when you wrote that, yes, we do have, whether you agree or not, that it belongs there in the capital improvement plan, there is a water tower in that plan. I mean, there's, there, it simply is. And it has been there for the past two years, and it hasn't gone away yet. So, you know, it's, you're, you're trying to be accurate. Well then, the plan has it in there. So it hasn't gone away.
I, I need to do some, do something procedurally here that I should have done in the beginning. Those of you out there have the ability to look and see who is up here. It's been brought to my attention that maybe everybody up here does not know everybody out there. So if you would, starting with the chair, if you would give us your name and maybe how many years you served on this committee, go down the table, please.
I'm Vicki Myers. I've been on planning and zoning since twenty fourteen. I started as an alternate and I'm in my last term. I think we've all been on the planning, or the land use planning committee now since August of eighteen. That's when we started this. Um, we wrapped it up in September of nineteen. I live at three oh one OBW. Originally bought property here in ninety-eight. Am I hitting everything you want us to say?
That's enough, thank you.
She's got two dogs.
Yeah.
Beautiful house.
Uh, my name's Pete Palace, and I've been on, uh, planning and zoning, been an alternate for, I don't know, four or five years.
You actually took my alternate spot.
Took her alternate spot.
And you serve good for.
Thank you.
Anne.
I'm Anne Arnold, and I am on the land use planning committee only. I'm not on the PNC committee. I'm on board just as yet. I've been there since, I'm an off and on, I would say off and on since probably two thousand and fourteen.
Tracy Thomas, I've been on the planning and zoning for about a year and a half. Been on the land use for a year.
Kathy Gaines, land use only.
Uh, Mark Fleschauer, I've been, I, I think I joined about the same time Vicki joined. So I'm in my second and final term on the planning and zoning committee. I, I am serving on the audit committee as well.
I'm Dwight Wilson, Carolina Avenue, and I'm on the Elliott.
Thank you.
Um, which also was a member, so you should.
Planning and zoning and.
Yeah, I was on planning and zoning and then land use plan when this was done.
Yeah, I know, earlier I wanted to know if you were going to run back and forth depending on which hat you had on.
Depends if I agree or disagree with you. Mr. Evans, I have a question of you. On page four one, in the middle of the page, water supply system. Town of Holden Beach, the water supply system currently has three thousand and fifty residential connections. My question is, if we don't have three thousand houses out. Can we?
Yes, a little bit like irrigation.
Yeah. That's where, that's where I'm going. But it's misleading to the public. Someone that doesn't deal with this assumes there's three thousand and fifty houses. I'd like to see something inserted to more correctly reflect the number of residences.
There's a whole chapter on how many residents we have and how many houses and, yeah, earlier.
That's well and good, but if somebody flips to this page, it doesn't address that. Furthermore, I, I know, I know the island pretty well. And my professional opinion is that when we build out, there's going to be about thirty-five hundred houses on this island, building lots. So in looking at this thirty-fifty number, instantly, in my mind, tells me there's only going to be about five hundred more houses. That's not true. So I, I'd just like to more clearly define that. Because the last I heard, the number is like twenty-three fifty.
It's somewhere around in there. It's a, it's a bouncing number, twenty-three, thirty, it's somewhere in there.
Yeah.
But that is, that, that is.
Yeah, so, so we're only two-thirds built out.
So if you could just write that, like, if you could just write that and then say, including irrigation connections.
Plan.
Or including actuary.
Or whatever, however.
Yeah.
It really needs to, there is a, there's another real reason why that probably needs to be brought up too, is that it, it's state residential dwellings. There could end up being more of that, depending on what type of residential dwellings they are. You could end up with a bunch of condominiums or something to that effect. So we probably do need to write that number out. Or else it's going to always be inaccurate. The other reason is that irrigation is not subject to sewage use then. It reflects sewage capacity.
That's right.
By excluding that number.
Well, we have another whole chapter in sewage.
Well, now, we, 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 it's broke down in those other pages.
Yeah.
This is just, I think this is probably the only place where you're going to find that it's not broken down.
Yeah.
It's just a long.
Not to overkill the subject, but we were talking about water supply and water tanks a minute ago. Some of you may have been here when the town got sued. When a homeowner on the ocean front in a seven-hundred block, the house burned because the town didn't have water coming out of the fire hydrant to put it out. So just reminding everybody in the room, if a house were to burn on the West End of Beach, and the lawsuit proved that the supply of water, where it's not meeting the required amount, the town of Holden Beach just bought a house. Just kind of keep those things in mind. Couple houses, probably. Two or three. Why, I'm just curious, why wasn't there, was there no water coming out of that hydrant or just not enough? The short story is that the town had failed to maintain the fire hydrant to the point that the fire department went there and opened it and ordered it to come out. That's the reason you see these, one of the reasons you see the fire hydrants being blown out all the time, to make sure all those valves work and cleanse the lines. Anybody else got something?
Well, I can, yeah.
Proceed.
Yeah, if.
Pat, before, I'm sorry, before you get off the bottom of page four, before you get off the bottom of page four point two.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I know it's probably wordsmithing or whatever you want to call it. I mean, I, I agree with this sentence. Because to me, the board has not approved an upgrade to the facility. I know it's in the capital plan, but the board hasn't approved it. So to me, there's no capital improvements or upgrades planned. And planned would mean it's been approved. So I di, I disagree with you on your statement.
I think that's one of the reasons we left it in, because we are, we had this many discussions about that one.
We beat that one to death.
Because we were saying by the board.
Would you make the motion that we were to leave it as it is?
Yes, exactly.
Thank you for reminding me, I don't remember that.
We got it all right here, Will.
We know, um.
Well, thank you.
Well, quite, quite truthfully, I would rather just nothing appear than to say it that way where it could be, again, a bone of contention or confusion. Because when we accept the budget every year, the capital plan, you know, we're, it's part of what we accept. Now, it doesn't mean that we've got a specific project around it. But the Board of Commissioners, when they, when we accept the budget message and the budget, that ten-year plan is part of what we approve. So again, I would rather just have nothing show up talking capital rather than having a statement that has this level of debate.
Well, it's interesting to me that you would approve that with no data that shows that you need a new water tower, that line in the capital improvement.
Well, if I can point out something, if you look at it from the context of, of that dialogue, we don't have a plan in place other than a capital budget for the lift station upgrade either.
Don't they, doesn't the board approve each one of those before it actually begins?
But. Annually, each year, a lift station, the board has made a choice to do one a year. But those upgrades are sequenced in the capital plan. So I would put forth that there is a plan in place to upgrade the lift stations, and that's in the capital budget. So if you're going to look at it for that type of statement regarding the water system improvement, I think the analogy is, holds true for the lift station upgrades too.
Uh, I, I debate, I'm with you in that the town has discussed and has made plans to do it. I know funding it is a year-to-year basis, but the town has discussed and has said, we want to plan to upgrade all the lift stations. The town has not said, we won't do a new water tower yet.
There's, there's no document in place other than minutes wherein the budget, capital budget has been approved that, that puts that in black and white, though. There is no water supply plan corollary to, or equivalent to, uh, for a lift station upgrade that says that.
Then I kind of agree with Pat, why don't we just take the sentence out and make it?
Yeah, I just, I don't want to speak on behalf of the town, but it involves many organizations. And the reason you do capital planning is the criteria, the threshold for an item getting on a capital plan isn't the same as approving. And you put it in your, and you go out years to make sure that the organization has enough revenue capacity or means of generating enough funds to support that plan. And if you point out, you know, if you never, you get lazy or a mess and you find, oh, we need a new water system, it's going to cost twenty million dollars, oops, we haven't done it. I mean, that's why you do those kinds of things. It isn't necessarily, it's a little special. It, it was a possibility that somebody must have shown up years ago and has probably been sitting out two or three years down the road every, every year. And that's, that's that. So it isn't an approval, it's just a, another threshold.
Okay. If we go to some of my thoughts on different recommendations and things and sections, and we go to three dash seventeen.
Can you play your show, Mark?
Oh, go to three seventeen. Uh, the policy three one L, the stormwater discharges from municipal sources. I think the policy is well understood. I, I, the recommendation to me is rather nebulous. And is this not something that is better simply left out and it will be handled within the department? And if something specific becomes needed, it'll come to the Board of Commissioners. Cause I don't quite understand what expanding the efforts to identify and eliminate stormwater discharges actually means. Expe-, because it's like, what's the baseline right now? I just think that it's, it's perhaps more specific than it needs to be. Tim, you're grinning.
Well, there's a map in here that identifies all the areas in the town where stormwater needs to be addressed. And if you're going to have, if you're going to identify those areas where stormwater needs to be addressed, and we all know that there's pockets of areas in the town that have stormwater issues, one of them right up here in the three-hundred block, then I would assume that we would, uh, wanna have something, some sort of recommendation there that would, uh, say that not only are we gonna have the map, but we're going to identify and take action of some kind of what it may be. Now, whether we need to be directing departments to do stuff, you know, that was always a potential we hear in this thing. But I did, you know, definitely, I, I, I tried to keep that from happening. But something needs to be in there that says, we know there's a stormwater issue, we know there's a stormwater problem, and we hope that we're gonna, you know, maybe we're going to have some idea of what we're gonna do or prepare to do. It needs to be in this, this land use plan. There's not, there's not any plan anywhere that I know that doesn't address stormwater.
No, the policy, I think the policy is very good, very clear. It was, as you said, the level of direction in the recommendation, was that appropriate or not, so.
It, it, it could actually, if you could put in there, expand the efforts to identify and eliminate stormwater, and leave out public works. And that puts the, that gives the manager back his job. He can determine who does that.
Yeah, that kind, mhm. Um, then on three-eighteen, policy three-one-V, living shorelines. My, I am, I am all for the supporting development of living, uh, shorelines. My one concern is that this is sort of a, what I call a time point phrase right now. You know, it's like buzzwords sometimes. So, I would actually think that a little bit more description around that. Because again, we're talking about possi-, you know, we're talking about the next ten years and phraseology changes. So, I would put a few, development of living shorelines, for example, blah, 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 to make clear what living shorelines actually mean. So that a few years from now, if the definition has changed and the wording has changed, it's still clear what was being discussed here. On okay, um. On the three-two-G erosion control on ocean shorelines. And I, I know I've said things like this before for beach and inlet things. I, I just think that it should be phrased around making sure we're always considering old and new. And that the town, is it shall or should? There's a lot of times there's shall, and I thought a lot of the discussion was, you know, do we use shall too much? Should it be shall or should? But whichever it should be. Continually evaluate existing and new methodologies for shoreline stabilization with focus on technologies that increase resiliency with minimal risk of upstream or downstream negative impact. It's the, instead of, the town does not support hardened structures on the ocean shoreline of, and it should be of the town of Holden Beach. We are talking about our own locale. But I would broaden it. I would be less specific about hardened structures, although if you want to leave it, that's fine. But it needs to be that we don't support hardened structures on the shoreline of the town of Holden Beach.
Um, that whole, the town thing is throughout the whole document. So, should we go back and have that do a search and replace?
Uh, I don't.
I think she's referring to the shoreline of Holden Beach.
They have a long distance.
Opposite ocean aisle, for example.
Yeah, I, I think this is one that we wanna make really specific, that we are talking about our own island.
So, only this spot then?
Yeah, this, it's this spot, it's this particular spot.
No, no, so she's not saying the town is wrong, she's saying the town does not support hardened structures on the
Ocean shoreline of the town of Holden Beach.
So, that we don't talk about, we're not.
Yeah, we're, yes.
In the future, are we leaving that last one?
Yes, but she wants it to say of the town of Holden Beach, so that we're not saying we don't support it on ocean aisle, we don't support.
We're sticking to our island, we're, we're writing the land use plan for our island.
That's fair enough.
That, that's.
So, we're not gonna?
What, Tim?
Well, I would, I never liked that line.
I know, I.
I, I, I think it should say the town does not support hardened structures on the ocean shoreline at this time.
Three-two-G.
I, I, I would definitely not limit our ability in the future when we find out that they work by having a forward line on it. I know the first line doesn't necessarily kill it forever. But, um.
Doesn't that imply that everything, Tim? I mean, everything can change, and, and this is a living, growing document, so.
It's not written in stone, it's not written in stone. But once again, if you go to camera to apply for a permit, you find out in the future, it doesn't have to be a terminal groin, it could be some other hardened structure, and your document gives the impre-, gives the impression that you don't, you know, I mean, that could be a problem, same thing with the parking. And that was my saying, was that it, it don't even have to say at this time, I mean, you could say something else, but.
Well, that, that was why, when I wrote something, it was about continually evaluating, and you talk about existing new methodologies for stabilization. Just focus on technologies that increase resiliency with minimal risk of upstream or downstream negative impact. That kinda covers everything. And it, it does.
Says anything to me.
It does, it does allow, well, this is a document that you wanna have room for, as Tim says, particularly in areas that you don't know what five to ten years brings, and if grant money becomes available.
Then you change it.
You want a few things to be open.
At this time, it's very clear that the town of Holden Beach and all its citizens and all the people on the board do not support hardened structures. So, it was important to us to make sure that it reflected the current state of the town.
Uh, you cannot say that all of the citizens do not support hardened, there's.
The majority, I would say.
I don't, I don't even know if it's that, but it's clear that, that at this point in time, but I, I don't wanna get into a citizen count. There's a vocal group that still think that a groin could be a solution, or a jetty could be a solution, so.
And so, the, but the town, the, the board is the one that are voting on this, and the board all ran on their campaign that they do not support a terminal groin.
But this is not about what we are today or not. It's about how we wanna write this, again, with the idea it's used for grants, it's used for development things. So, you know, I g-, I said, I, we can leave that sentence there, I don't like it. I'd rather have it more soft in general. But we simply need to make sure it's the ocean shoreline of Holden Beach that we're discussing.
Yeah. I, uh, when, when it comes to the hardened structures, I think we all voted on it. Not only did we vote on it, we had people come here to discuss it. And I don't think any major change is going to happen in the next five to ten years that would require us
Hope not.
to worry about implementing a hardened structure, so I would just leave it the way it is.
I, I wanna speak to that. Those obviously have worked on jetties and terminal groins for forty-plus years. Still feel there's hope that maybe that will happen one day. Those of you that haven't been to Ballhead Island, don't know the history of Ballhead Island, you need to ride over there and see what's happened since they did what they did. Ocean Isle is moving ahead as best they can. If you told me five years ago that Holden Beach would forever declare they don't want a terminal groin or a jetty, I, I would've never believed it. Cause at that time, majority of the town was gung ho for it. So, I don't think we can sit in a room and say, in five years, ten years, whatever. I think whenever the results come in from Ballhead Island, and if they build one in Ocean Isle, and they're sitting there glowing oceanward, and we're sitting here washing away, I think there's a good chance maybe somebody will rethink their position. So, I would like to see something a little milder, myself. Never say never.
I don't wanna see the word jetty anywhere, because jetties are not legal in North Carolina. I know what you're saying, but that's not a legal thing in North Carolina.
Yeah, and terminal groins weren't either.
Yeah. Terminal groins were permitted in the legislation, but jetties weren't.
They were, but at one time, you didn't even talk about it. So, you can't project what the future's gonna be. And I know I'm in the minority right now, but I've been here a while.
Like what, um, Pat suggested that we, because that would, with any future studies, uh, that would show whether they were upward or downward, uh, false positive results.
I, again, I'm, I'm very happy to write up the different things I say, so that it's, but, but I thought a lot about how to say it, so that you're giving yourself latitude. But you're still pointing out that what you're really looking at is resiliency and minimal risk of negative impacts. And, and that's what we're after, that's what we're after. And if there was some amazing new technology that suddenly dropped out of the sky like manna from heaven, you know, full well, we'd jump on it. To do whatever we could, if it fit how we feel about maintaining our shoreline in a resilient way, so.
I'm gonna throw, I wanna, I wanna throw one more thing on the table. There's a lot of, you go to a lot of meetings, there's a lot of official discussions. There are also a lot of meetings that are not official meetings. Talking in the bathroom, or over the telephones, or whatever. Some government officials are not happy with what's happening in Lockwood Folly, because the money keeps getting thrown out by the county and the state, and there's not much progress being made. So, there is some discussion going on. What else can we do, what else can we do? And I wanna tell you, you can write it down in your minutes, any way you want to, but I'm gonna tell you. There is, there is a lot of discussion going on behind the scenes, considering those alternatives that most of in the room are against right now. Because the money keeps going down the commode, and then nothing happening. And they're gonna do something, they're gonna cut that funding off? Or they're gonna do something else, it ain't gonna keep going the way it's going. Through the past fit, skip over the last five years or so. Go back to the fifteen years before that, we had all this government money coming to help that inlet down there. And now it's virtually gone away. Things are gonna have to change, and, uh, we're gonna have to do whatever we can get help with. Just, I'm gonna say one more thing. Where you're sitting, since nineteen seventy-eight, I built my office building over there, there's about a hundred and fifty feet of ocean property that's gone. And you go up and down the beach, Madam Chairman, where your house is, you know the history of your property.
I do.
It's not important until it gets to your house.
It is, yes, it is.
It's like the firehouse next door, if it's burning, it's important, you know? It's not getting better, so we need to have all alternatives on the table. And circumstances change, ideas change. I'm gonna, who, you wanna talk more? You wanna keep going?
I, I have more stuff, but finish, finish your topic.
No, I'm through, I don't want to know, no, no.
I have a little something to offer there as, as a representative of the town. I have also been approached, and I was actually approached by the commissioner that represents my district. And I'm assuming he passed this along to me because I work here in what I do. But his direct words versus me, that, uh, they weren't real sure of the fact that we closed the door on certain options. And it's gotten awful hard for him to justify his constituents dumping money in the waterway. You know what I mean, when we're not doing a lot of part here, uh, to try to help to keep them. And, and, cause they have different views than we do about what works and what doesn't. And I'm just passing that along. And he, he gave that directly to me, and I'm assuming because of where I work and what I do. I'm just giving it to you.
But along those lines, I mean, I think we need to make sure we all keep clear that when we dredge the inlet folly, that we're dredging for navigation. We're, that's what's happening, not beach nourishment. So, let's make sure that we don't conflate the two. You know what I'm saying?
I clearly understand what you're saying. Very well, I understand it. Miss Pat.
Um, if you flip to three-twenty, and policy three-two-P. Just a, okay, we strongly support the efforts of the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. I, this sort of just stuck in my craw a bit, because even the Army Corps of Engineers and publications for the past five years that they put out annually admit that they are doing a piss-poor job on most inlets. So, um, you know, I, I, I tend not to, when something's not going well, I don't lead with something like, we strongly support the efforts. There's ways of saying it that sort of imply that there should be a better job done. And I, again, I, my, the way I would write it, would've written it in, in my previous life, would've been something about, the town strongly supports the long-term commitment made by the Army Corps of Engineers to ensure the Lockwood Folly inlet remains navigable. And the town strongly supports the ACE least-cost policy of dredge sand placement. So, we're not necessarily saying we're thrilled with how things have been going, but we are saying that the commitment that they give is what we are supporting and expecting.
Yeah, could you repeat what?
Yeah.
I didn't see a change.
The town strongly supports the long-term commitment made by the Army Corps of Engineers to ensure the Lockwood Folly inlet remains navigable. You're strongly supporting their efforts, and again, their efforts, I would say, at times are, um, a bit.
But you're, you're not, you're not leaving us the last part of that sentence about what the benefi-, oh, okay.
No, no, no.
You just stopped speaking.
I just stopped speaking, yeah, because at some, at some point, you just, with bene-, no, and, and then it goes on, that it remain, and it's strong, so, strongly supports the ACE least-cost policy of dredge sand placement, which is what we, of course, wrote a resolution around. So.
I, I'd like to add something to that, if I may. The most important thing about that whole thing, in my opinion, is that the Corps of Engineers is mandated to maintain Lockwood Folly inlet.
Very good.
I mean, that's.
So, we strongly support the long-term commitment mandated to the Army Corps of Engineers?
The Corps of Engineers has, is mandated to maintain that. What, the problem is they, I can't remember the exact depth, it was eight feet or ten feet at one time, they reduced it to six or eight now?
It's twelve plus two.
But what was it?
Authorized depth for the inlet's twelve plus two.
But the original document that mandated they maintain it, what were the numbers in that?
Twelve plus two, yes, sir. And over time, it's
They keep, yeah.
Got shall.
So, we strongly support long-term commitment as mandated to the Army Corps of Engineers to assure the Lockwood Folly, again, I'll, it's, it's basically saying, we strongly support what they're supposed to be doing. Not necessarily we're supporting how things have been playing out the last few years where it's getting more and more difficult.
So, just to clarify?
Yeah.
And how, how do you finish the, the rest of that sentence?
Um, and the town strongly supports the ACE least-cost policy of dredge sand placement. Um, with beneficial placement of dredge spoils on Holden Beach.
Okay, as long as you put that, we get it.
Yeah. Yeah, 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 with ben-, yeah, with beneficial placement of dredge spoils on Holden Beach. Uh, three-twenty-one, I have a question. Uh, three twenty-one, I have a question on policy three two T. Um, evacuation shelters. I, I, I don't know how much, how much control we have over ensuring evacuation shelters are, um, access, you know, are, are well-publicized, of course, but accessible and meet national standards because we pretty much take what the county gives, so I just thought maybe it was a little bit more than we can ensure. We can ensure that it's well-publicized to our citizens, but, but, I mean, Mr. Mayor, do we have something that, I, I mean, I don't know if we have a, a program where we're part of what gets done or anything. I didn't want it to go beyond where we actually have any control.
All right, I let, I let me speak to that. Now, I'm in charge of that.
We didn't touch that. I mean, we didn't even discuss it.
I, I understand, but sometimes things don't get touched that have continued, but it, it's sort of, yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
The word shall scares me to death.
Me too, I circled it.
Because we don't have the ability. We don't have anywhere to go. You know, we, when we leave town, there are no facilities on the island for us to go to. We're mandated to leave. Puts us in the county, so we're subject to the counties providing for us, all of us. So something to the effect that we'll work with the county and support their plan, something like that. But we don't want to do anything that says that we shall ensure, ensure anything. Especially with the county having control of all the facilities over there and us having none.
Could you just substitute the word have, okay?
Say again?
Substitute the word advocate instead of ensure. Advocate to the county that all these facilities.
I think that's a great idea.
Yes.
Good idea.
Okay, um, then if we go to, I think I already discussed this one on four thirteen, but again, the policy four one B. I do think it, it should say the town shall ensure efficient uninterrupted operation of water facilities for town residents and visitors for both normal and peak demands, to just be complete on what we are saying. I, on the bottom, policy four one C, the recommended action. Encourage the county to provide additional sewage treatment to residents outside of town boundaries. It doesn't make, we don't have residents out, I mean, our residents are all in. I, I think it's, this is overstep. I think this one just shouldn't be there.
That's extratorial zoning and stuff.
Yeah, so I think policy four one C is fine, but the recommendation of going beyond, I, I don't think, I don't think it needs to be in this plan. Four fourteen, golf cart.
It came from when they were doing, um, before my time, but there was problems with the, um, water quality.
That's right.
That what it is, and so when areas off the island are still using their, uh, septic systems, that we were getting bacteria into the water, which then affects our, um, water quality when they do the testing. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am, that's a hundred percent correct. People that were, the Varnetown people, the water quality coming down the river, killing the shellfish. And whether you agree with it or not, the philosophy of sea air states across the way. You know, waterway's been closed and slow down it to the bridge almost all the time. You know, they got the same problem in sea air that we had on our canals.
Well, the air canals does have sewer.
This is all information I don't know, so if it's appropriate to keep it, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
But what I'm, where I'm trying to go, and you are right, but there are other subdivisions like sea air canal and all that continue to impede the use of the Shoal River. The little river that branches off up there and all that. So, yes, I'm in favor of helping those people clean up our environment. And, uh, and we have people begging, you know, for those services, but the county won't do it. I guess they're limited for many reasons, but I'm for as much sewer as we can put out out there.
So it's appropriate to leave, because it does encourage the county to do that?
Yeah.
Um, policy four one G, golf carts. The recommendation, um, about exploring policies and regulations concerning the use of golf carts in the town. Since these are motor vehicles, my understanding was there, there are laws that they have to follow, so are you saying going beyond the law somehow, we should do something? Cause that gets a little bit dicey, doesn't it? When it's a motor vehicle law and the town's gonna develop a policy or something, so I, I, that one bothered me because there's the, there's the state law in place. We're, supporting the safe use of street legal golf carts is just fine. I'm just not sure the recommended action plays well.
I, I did add in that it doesn't matter whether or not the town supports the use of street legal golf carts.
They're legal.
It's, they're legal.
Yeah.
That perhaps it should be stricken.
My understanding is the town.
Like my pickup truck either.
The town can regulate its streets, but it can't override DOT Street like Ocean Boulevard.
But we can enforce the rules and that's, that's great.
Why do they have to do with parking, you were talking, we've worked a lot, we changed this several times, didn't we? The, uh, the policies and regulations were about parking.
Yeah, the, the four one V one was about parking. That, that was discussed. It's about where those golf carts can end up, near the accessways. And, and if they could be used in the same places where cars could be parked.
I will, if it's parking, then, then specifying concerning the parking of golf carts, that's different than the use of golf carts.
Well, it's also, um, I've got written down traffic congestion, safety, um, that it's not legal west of the pier in the winter. I've just got those notes written down.
Yeah, I'm the one who brought up a lot of those. It's, it's not the fact that they're, they're legal and they have to follow the laws about transportation. It's, it was more around the traffic congestion and it'd be nice if people have twenty cars lined up behind them on a golf cart, they'd slide over and let cars go by, but, but may, and maybe that needs to be worded differently.
That would be education of golf cart drivers, which, you know, teaching them, teaching them courtesy on the road and that, that's, that's writing, exploring policies and regulations isn't gonna help on that. I, I just don't understand exactly what comes of this that we actually can do other than follow the law. That's why, that's why I was questioning what we're trying to do here.
Well, if you just change the recommendation to just include, uh, parking. That's what we'd be asking the planning and zoning board to explore policies and regulations, improving
Parking.
Parking situations within the law and compliance.
You could put that, but I think we just wanted to like make it more generic to whatever policy and regulations there are, right?
Yeah, cause something could pop up here and we should, we need to address it, whatever it is. You know, parking, I wouldn't, I wouldn't think we want to limit ourselves to just parking, like golf carts. There could be something that comes down the road and we say, oh, we want to participate, now we have a regulation against it. Just to be open.
I thought we did all this research about more, more about enforcement, which I think I never doesn't say. But I believe there was more geared towards the enforcement of the law, such as children being in car seats, no children driving, blah, blah, blah.
Seat bags. If I remember correctly, we did, if I remember correctly, we did talk about working with the rental companies to make sure the drivers understood what the regulations were.
So it's exploring policies and regulations related to the safe use of golf carts more? It's, the way, when you say the use, it's sort of like a, you know, as David said, they're legal, okay, they're legal. Um, there are traffic laws, so.
So we won't say use, we'll say operation, all right? I mean, this, this is not, this is not something that's really gonna change what we wanna do here, right? I mean, just leave it the way it changes to operation if that makes you happy, but it's, as Pete says, leave it open, we're, we're trying to make things liberal, let's not be more specific than we have to be and.
I think operation's a better word.
Okay.
Okay. On, actually on public parking, on page four fifteen, um, when Mike was talking to it. The town supports public access parking, absolutely. Continue monitoring the need for public parking. Well, I, I would assume that what we're talking about, continue monitoring the need for increased public parking. Um, or changes in public parking or some, we all, we're never going to say, you know, that we don't need public parking, so um, is it increased or, or, you know, I, I don't know, but I, I think it's, I think it's really we continue monitoring the need for increased parking or adequate park or something, but not just the need for parking. And it's not that I'm saying any more than Mike does that we have to constantly increase, but we do, we do monitor it and watch for whether or not it's getting worse and whether or not there's a solution.
What number are you on?
Four two E one, the recommendation, recommended action on page four fifteen.
Right, continue monitoring the need. I think that covers everything, you can monitor the need. Yeah, keeping it generic versus more specific.
We know there's a need for parking. We have parking. That's, that's what I mean by it's.
We've talked about paid parking, do we want to implement paid parking? And, you know, so there's just a lot of things that that can entail if you just leave it.
It does the need for increased public parking. Put this as a specific.
Oh, it's monitoring, it's not saying you're gonna do it, but you monitor it.
Monitoring the need for increased public parking is very specific.
Or additional.
It doesn't address the need for paid parking or, like we have this crazy law where we can't park from two to five in the morning, right? So, all of that, we need to monitor that, but I would think the need for public parking is very broad.
Okay.
Aspects, you're saying.
Yeah, a lot of aspects.
Okay, I, I accept that, that explanation, it's, I get it. Um, policy four two N, safe boating. I just, the use of the word shall there, does that, does that go beyond, I mean, I don't, is that should, is, shall is a we must, right? Is there somewhere, is?
It's the very last.
Yeah, the very last. Sometimes I see the word shall and I actually think, I'm not sure.
Well, my first question is, what are we doing now?
I, well.
Well, I got a good example of, of that. Um, just today, we got forwarded a request from the Coast Guard Auxiliary, they're offering a safe boating class. And they had requested that we disseminate it to everybody, you know, it's where they show you how to drive your boat. And, um, Heather said, is it okay if I send this out? And I said, absolutely, it's in accordance with what we're supposed to be doing, so that's, that's, I, I would assume that's an example of, of what that means.
So shall is an appropriate word instead of should?
I'd like.
Well, we, we did it, whether we're supposed to do it or not, so.
We shall do it, we are doing it.
Maybe put the word continue. The town shall continue to increase. I don't know. There's a number, I went through here last night, or yesterday afternoon. And there's a number of places where we say shall and some we say will and in, in legal terms, they have different definitions.
Yeah.
And I don't, and to, I think Pete's point earlier, this is not a legal document per se. It does concern me a little bit, like this one says, the town shall, that means if somebody comes looking at a grant, says, okay, tell me what you did on this one. We gotta be able to say, we're doing something, because it says we shall do it. But I don't know if it's, the lawyer, the lawyer can weigh in on this one.
Well, I'm just gonna say, the, the definition, according to the, the appendix for the document, is shall imposes an obligation. It says an obligation to carry out a course of action, rather than encourages or promotes.
So looking at it, it says synonyms for shall is should. So to me, that's wordsmithing, saying should or shall.
When you, when you look at the actual definitions that were given and shall has a stronger obligation. So if we didn't pass that information down and somebody got hurt boating and it came back that we had received some notification that there was gonna be a safe boat class and we hadn't advertised it, but we shall do that. Does that leave us more liable than if we use the word should? That's, that's my, I know it's wordsmithing, but these definitions are really.
In this case, you want, on this boating, when you want to change it to the, the town should seek to increase.
That was my question, whether should is more appropriate than shall or is shall okay?
Why don't we just, I'm sorry, we could just make it the town encourages public awareness of safe boating. We don't have to should anything, we don't have to shall anything, we're in favor of it, we do what we can, and it doesn't impose any liability or obligation on us to do anything.
Sounds good.
I'm gonna be honest with you, I mean, this was not something, you guys correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think we even, this is the boilerplate.
Yes, this came, this came from you.
Yeah, so I, I mean, you're not hurting our feelings, we're just kinda listening to you here.
Well, I, I don't think we want it to hurt anybody's feelings. We wanted to, we wanted to try to get a document, that's the best document we can put out, that's, that's all we're looking to do. And I think we all feel the same way about that.
So is encourages the best, if people think encourages?
Just say the town encourages.
Public awareness of safe boating.
Public awareness of safe boating.
Yeah. Okay.
I, I'd like to ask a question. Can anyone in the room anticipate, anticipate how long we're gonna be here, cause some of us have other appointments, we're gonna have to call and cancel.
I don't have, I don't have that much.
I got one. That's one bonus to go back and look at, because it, the, when you read it, it could have two different definitions.
Okay, um, on five one C, uh, page five nine, aesthetics. Does the town work with developers on aesthetics and architectural characteristics now?
We certainly did when we changed, when we did heights and, and
Absolutely.
gave the capability for different.
Okay, I understand height, but aesthetics and architectural characteristics.
We did it so that we could improve the aesthetics of the town by giving the capability of different architectural features above the, above the, the last four.
Okay, is ensure the right word or is it encourage? The town will work with developers to ensure that development is done in a manner?
Well, I would assume that if, if we're working with, with contractors to, to make sure that the following guidelines and the rules, that it should be ensure, not encourage, because we've got to do the job. We've gotta make sure to do it right.
It's not, it's, it's not a suggestion, it's a requirement.
That's right.
Okay.
That's exactly right.
Okay. Um, on policy five one J, one, the recommended action. Um, where you're talking about working with other public and non-governmental organizations, um, to preserve existing green space, et cetera. I would not do an EG with a specific, number one. I would just avoid any NGO specification and just make it general if you wanna talk about non-governmental organizations. If you wanna talk about non-governmental organizations and not name any one, or if you're gonna name, you have to name a whole slew of them so that there's no sort of perception that you've got one favored over another.
Yeah.
That one was ballparked.
Yeah, that's a, that's a, that's a baller. A change with this.
Change with camera.
Yeah, change with camera.
I'm simply saying, I would take out the one example. Um, on the future development of the mainland, five eleven, I thought people were, were more or less saying that the ETJ has sort of, that ship has sailed. So, uh, five eleven, recommended, recommended action, five one P one. I'm, I'm just asking, is this still something that is appropriate?
I hope so.
Mr. Mayor?
I'm gonna ask Mr. Hugh at that, but as far as I'm concerned.
Which one, which one is it?
Page five.
Five eleven, the recommended action, five one P one.
The ETJ.
It just says explore options, so it's not anything that you're, you know, we don't even say you're support or whatever, how do you say all the other ones, support?
And answer your question, ETJ, I believe is the question. That's a subject I'm not touching right now. I think it's a moot point for us. And the county has basically told us hands off. And the town citizens, and many of us tried to take control of causeway. There's big uproar in the town and townspeople turned their thumbs down on it and now look what we got.
Now, that was before my time, was that annexation or ETJ?
It was work, it was trying to. It was trying to control the causeway in any way we could.
We annexed, there was one board and the next board voted it out.
Really?
Was that not right, Alan?
Oh, yeah, it was a bitter battle, a lot of hard feelings.
Well, if we leave it in there, though, you know, time tide, retirement changes, and, you know, ten years go by and, you know, it could be a very different story today. A lot of people on the island today weren't here when, when all of that happened. And so that, that might have a different outcome today, in that direction.
Can't, you can't afford to annex it now.
No.
Can't do it involved during annexation.
Right.
It could then.
Too legal.
But I think the goal should always be that the town would wanna control or have some input as to what happens over on the causeway, because it impacts quality of life on the island. And, you know, whatever becomes legal or not legal, or whatever the particular, um, moment happens, it, it could happen that, that somebody, a group of people, I know there are a couple of landowners now on the causeway who would be interested in having the town have more impact than it used to. And so that person wasn't even there when all this happened, so I know that there is some interest.
Well, there's a.
I had the same input from, from owners up there.
Well, you used a good word, because this, this uses the word regulate and is, you, you sort of threw out the word, I think, influence. Or, so there's a difference between, you know, like, helping out and having some influence versus trying to regulate something.
Well, if it, if it becomes an ETJ.
I, I understand, yeah.
Then regulate's gonna be part of it.
Do we, do we need to just soften it and say, explore options to influence the land use and development?
That might, that's, that would be good.
I mean, he, he, we may be able to find a way to work with them. Yeah, we may be able to work with them without having to do an ETJ.
You wanna capture that one, you, that was good.
Say that again.
That was good, you wanna write that one down, capture it?
I can do that.
Okay, um, and then my, my next one, just, it, it's just a general, when I got to the table, six dash three, and I saw dates in there that, that were, um, you know, you got, you got fiscal year nineteen twenty, which isn't gonna happen, because this isn't gonna be approved by then, and twenty twenty one, it, there's, there's like, everything is nineteen twenty, twenty twenty one, there, there is not a, an actual attempt to sort of have a staggering of things. So I just, is, is that, is that deliberate?
You can address this, Tim, or I can, we asked the same question.
Uh huh.
And, um, the, the dates required, you know.
Yeah.
And, um, Wes said that he puts that in there and that's how he recommends it be done and it doesn't. Go ahead.
Can shorten this, this is part of the seven B requirements.
Yeah.
And so he puts that in there and says, then we meet those seven B requirements. And he's got them in there, I guess, in a, in a way that would best get the document approved.
Well, I, I'm not, I'm not questioning having a year in there. I'm just questioning having fiscal year two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty for anything that's gonna come out of this, because that ain't gonna be. And then other one, there's nothing other than nineteen twenty or twenty twenty one, there's, and I just wondered if this group was thinking we could stagger these things better.
This was not ours, this is.
We can't mess this.
Right.
Yeah, you can mess this part of seven B.
This we can't touch.
What, what you can do is, is that it's, or somehow outliving the dates, then once the document gets approved, we can send those dates to the city back into our own. And then, but I would not mess with this, I would not mess with, with six three. As a matter of fact, the conversations that I had earlier about some of these changes was that six three was a definite, uh, uh, after seven B requirements, probably fitting with. Did Pete West agree?
Unrealistic.
Yeah, it, it was very confusing for us, but, I mean, I had the same questions about it, because it didn't make sense to me either. And, um, he basically said, this is one you need to leave alone. So, um, and I know that they would all, all be back sitting here with, well, and you all know that I've come to these meetings with a zillion tabs and that was one of them, and, um, basically, that's not one that we wanna.
Okay.
But he did tell me though, to make, I think to make me consider, was that these dates are not, you're not held to these dates in any way, that you are.
They're goals.
They're not, yeah, they're kind of not even goals, it's kind of very nebulous, um, you're not, everything is in there, you're not held to it.
They're aspirational.
Yeah.
Well, it's aspirational, we would finish it before we even got the land use plan approved, that, that one.
I hear ya, I just, I'm telling you that he, now, if we did change the, it would go back again, I guess it's there now? I, I don't even know how that would work.
It's in the process, it's at DCM right now, they're doing it to make sure that these are seven B requirements, these are minimum requirements. And if it does, then it'll get approved, then it'll come to you, and you know, make these changes if you wish, and then we'll send it back and they'll review it as an amendment, because the document will already be approved.
But there's only certain things that needs to be sent back for, not any little wordsmithing, right?
Right, you gotta send everything back.
Only if it affects.
I'll, I'll be in contact. As soon as we know what all these are, and as soon as we get the document back, I'll be in contact with the DCM as to what they would consider an amendment, or what they could just consider changing a few words. So we'll know exactly which, but I'm assuming that y'all are gonna vote on these changes at some point in time before we get to the proper, I present them to DCM.
Mm-hmm. I, I did have one last question, are we mandated to prepare an implementation status report for DCM every two years? Is that part of the rules? Because the last, the last land use plan I read, it was the town will routinely review the policy and implementation section to determine whether changes to the policies and, uh, rec, so has that changed, that it's?
It's all of us that are monitoring, and, and it used to, you would monitor your plan and then you had, you had a certain amount of years for it to have to be done.
Mm-hmm.
But there is no timeline now for redo. Um, it, it, it used to be every five years, and now there's no timeline. Once you do this, you can do a complete redo like we chose to do, which we did, or you can do amendments, uh, to, to this plan all the way to the future. So if any of this stuff you wanna change, it can continually be changed, as long as it doesn't match with the seven B.
This, this, but this specifically says, the town shall prepare an implementation status report for the Division of Coastal Management every two years.
Where is that, is that in?
It's, yeah, it's five one R. And I just, is that, is that now, cause that's very different from the last land use plan, what it said. So has that become the new rule?
They're gonna, they're, I understand if what you're, what they're gonna do is ask us if we're gonna use it, if we want any changes, if we may, if we're going to, uh, continue to use it, if it remains, or if we're gonna do a full update, that's what I'm understanding at CRC when they talk about changing. The reason they're doing that now, and was not in the last one, is we call staff now those B, not the CRC. Staff, as in the, it doesn't, it doesn't perform the due to, but that's the reason that, that's in.
Okay.
There'll be a staff years plan when they go to the.
That's fine. That was it.
All right, I got one. If y'all will turn to page four thirteen. Page four thirteen, number four one A. I, I reread this one last night, it just kinda struck me funny. It says, uh, continue, town shall continue to provide a range of services to residents within the incorporated areas of the town. Connection to water and sewer lines will be at the expense of the developer. If water or sewer facility upgrades or expansions are required for new development, the needed improvements will be at the expense of the developer. So does that mean if we have to buy more sewage capacity, the developer pays for all of that? That's what it said. I'm trying to say, it just struck me kinda funny last night, I was rereading it, it's like, that, that seems a little not clear.
Mr. Hugh, are you correct? You, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but that's the way it's always been, isn't it, David?
Traditionally, that's the way it is, and, 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 basically, it, and generally, that's really geared at a new subdivision. And the developer puts the lines in and then deeds them to the town, that's.
The town contractor would account it for enough volume to take care of the projected growth of the town. And then the developer just pays, gets it functional.
Yep, yeah, yeah, okay, I just wanna make sure we weren't saying something we didn't mean here. That's all I got.
The developer turns it over to the town once it's brewed, inspected.
Okay. I'll, I'll write up the things that I said, the people said, write it up, so that the board has it, to take a look at it.
I got mine.
Okay, well, Mike had a couple of things, so, um, if you wanna pass them to me, when you have them, just email them to me and I'll include them in just one big, what we discussed, and, um, I will try to have it for the February meeting. Yes, David?
I got a question.
Yo.
And, and maybe I missed it. Was there any mention of, cause we talk about supporting the Army Corps of Engineer for the main, engineers in various ways, for the maintenance of the Lockwood Folly inlet.
Right.
Is, in here, I didn't see it, was there any mention, and, we talk about providing, uh, support for sewage systems of off the island county locations for improvement of water quality. In here, was there any mention about support for maintenance of the intercoastal waterway?
No.
Cause that is a, I know that we speak to transportation in terms of bicycle paths and roads and all those kinds of things, but, and, and this is kinda my, my ongoing soapbox, because I get on the Grand Strand, all these regional transportation facilities absolutely are devoid of any recognition of the intercoastal waterway as a transportation, uh, method. And that is something that's sorely lacking at the local level and it's sorely lacking at our regional level and county level. We're only seeing some recognition of it from the parks and recreation side that talks to these blue stream connections for, um, all up and down the east coast. But, um, I don't know if it's appropriate or too late to mention that, that there, that the section on the support for the inlet maintenance, we can insert some verbiage about, uh, support for the maintenance of the lock, of the intra-coastal waterway. Cause we talk about disposal sites, support and identification of disposal sites. Well, we're not gonna need any disposal sites if we're not dredging the waterway. Huh, I mean, why are we looking for disposal sites for, for sediment that isn't being dug? Cause the sediment that's being dug, that's acceptable for beach placement, that's, that's going on the beach. We don't need a dispos, that's the disposal site for the beach compatible sand. But why are we looking at finding disposal sites when we're not digging the waterway anyway?
If you have something specific and where you wanna put it, just, uh, write it and tell me where and I'll include it in the overall, what we're proposing.
Yeah, and, and I, I wasn't privy to the, the part of the, of the committee, and it just dawned on me then, and it's just a, that is a recurring, obvious omission, um, at, at all levels here locally, because we, we automatically defer to Uncle Sugar that's been taking care of the waterway for, well, hadn't been taking care of the waterway for forty years now, and.
Okay.
What chance are we to go then, David?
It would probably be appropriate to stick it, um, somewhere close to the disposal side mention.
Three two P.
Three two P.
That's on page three twenty.
Oh, you.
Does it all require any actions?
Well, we could, we could add, with lock, with folly inlet, we could, we could just put, and.
Intercoastal waterway.
And then, right there.
Yes, sir.
Would that, would that do the trick?
So where are you adding that to? Three two P.
Well, we were rerouting three two P, remember? Three two P was turning into, we were strongly supporting the long-term commitment as mandated to the Army Corps to ensure Lockwood Folly inlet, so.
And, and the coastal waterway.
Yes, to ensure the Lockwood Folly and intra-coastal, okay?
Mm-hmm. That'll do the trick.
Well, can anybody speak to the mandated ICW maintenance, is that a mandated?
Just call it sandra.
To the Corps, federal mandate to the Corps.
It was a, yeah.
And we just don't have the, they quit.
No, they acknowledge that, that they, I mean, they acknowledge year after year in their sort of, here's what we're doing and how we're doing, they evaluate themselves every year in a report. And they just acknowledge that when it comes to inlets, they're not doing a very good job, they lack resource, they lack equip, whatever. So, you know, they themselves know that it's just not going the way it should. Um, they're, they're clear about it, but they are mandated to do it, but they are not getting it done.
They're mandated also at the DCM, not just the inlets.
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Yes.
There too, they've adjusted their current depth.
And we have, we have infrastructure that's voluntary, all of the country.
Anything else?
One thing, or two things. Vicki, do you know if this document can be edited?
I don't know.
I'm just, I'm just, no, capable on a, on a computer to be edited.
We don't have it now.
We're going to have it.
Yeah.
Tim said he can get it.
I can get your electronic.
Because I, I would. I would just suggest that, that the suggested changes, we have the document as it appears now, and then the suggested change next to it.
It's easier if I do track change, so everybody can see it.
And then everybody can see it, and we, and we won't have to go through this when it comes time to, to vote on it.
I am not gonna promise to have this before the March meeting, partially because the February meeting is a week early. And again, I am going through some things with my brother's health and I think February's gonna be a bit dicey for me.
Can we give it to somebody else to do, or?
Well, it's all in my head, or on my, or. Well, it's all in my head, or on my pa, or it's, it's in my head or on the paper of my chicken scratches of what I had. So, again, it's already out, it's already there for, you know, their review. If we don't vote on it until March, I don't really think it makes that big of a difference.
No, I just didn't want you to be, felt, feel like you were sad about it.
I'd actually, I'd, I'd, actually, I don't know that you don't wanna wait until after that's through with their review, because they have some changes.
Well, and I don't mind doing that, but I think we wanna capture what we want now, and as you said, have the board vote on it, so that we're ready when the time comes, if that's what we, I mean, that's what we decide to do. But, again, it's, it's easier to do it soon after you've had the discussion than to wait several months to do it. So, I'll get it done in February, but I won't get it done before the February twelfth meeting deadline.
Just give me a little bit of time to get these down.
Yeah.
I'm not sure I'm paying where you're at, but I'll, 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 I don't get, I'm not sure, but it's an actually, uh, definitely.
Yeah, cause I, I, I'm working on I H A the rest of this month, so. I really appreciate everybody doing this. It really was very helpful.
Absolutely.
Thank you again for the effort.
The, uh, every, every time we address, we, we, the town, address the land use plan, I remember when it was first mentioned that we were required to have one, and everybody was like, what is that? What is that? So, if you think it's chaotic now, you ought to have been here then, when you didn't know what you were working on, start with.
We didn't have Wes.
That's right. Thank you all for the input and your working here today.
Thank y'all.
Motion to adjourn?
Second. All in favor, say aye.